It is six thirty, we're ready to start our commission meeting. Um, Ms. Marlene, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo.
Here.
Commissioner Good. Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Seifel.
I'm here.
Mayor Ordus.
Here.
City Manager Dodge.
Here.
City Attorney Goran.
I'm here.
We have a call.
Thank you. City Attorney, would you like to leave?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Commission. The first public hearing item on the agenda tonight.
Pleasure, Legion.
I can't hear anymore.
Pleasure to be here.
...of the United States of America, and for which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Now, go ahead, City Attorney.
Ready? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Still, the first public hearing item relates to the CDBG program. It is a public hearing, the purpose of which is to receive public comment this evening on the city's action plan for community development block grant, that's the CDBG program in the city for the year 2021, and the adoption of proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three R dash forty on the CDBG substantial amendment, also a public hearing. For the record, the proposed resolution will be read as follows: A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving a substantial amendment to the city's action plan for community development block grant, that's the CDBG program, for the year 2021, directing the city manager, pardon me, to submit the substantial amendment to the city's action plan in the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorizing the city manager to execute all required documents, providing for conference, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. This item, when considered, will be on the agenda as item number eighteen, but at the moment, Mayor, this is the public hearing required by federal law. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody who would like to speak on the CDBG? Okay, close the public hearing. Um, City Attorney, let's go to presentations. Is the supervisor here yet? Mr. Scott? Oh, okay. Let's go to a resolute, a proclamation we have from Mr. Rick Case. Vice Mayor, would you like to read it?
No.
I don't have a tie on tonight. Mr. Case?
Thank you very much.
Always a pleasure.
Appreciate it. It's always a pleasure.
In case you all didn't know, the Case, Mr. Case and family donate hundreds of bikes to the city of Pembroke Pines every year, and we're very, very grateful for that.
Thank you. How are you?
Great.
Good to see you again. So we, so we have a proclamation here, uh, to be read, and it is Rick Case Bikes for Kids Day. Whereas in nineteen eighty-two, the Bikes for Kids program was started by Rita and Rick Case in conjunction with the local Boys and Girls Club, which you all support tremendously, to contribute new, to distribute new and pre-owned bicycles during the holiday season to those children whose holiday may be less than bright. And whereas the program teaches kids a valuable lesson about the joys of giving, as well as providing a much appreciated gift for children who might otherwise not hope to receive such a present. And whereas throughout the program's history, more than one hundred and twenty-five thousand bikes have been donated in Atlanta and South Florida. That's amazing. That's amazing.
Yay!
That's a lot of bikes. That's a lot of bikes. Lot of happy kids with that one, I will tell you. Whereas this contribution is significant in terms of effort and spirit by all who participate in this worthwhile project. And whereas, it is hoped that thousands more bicycles will be received and given to deserving children yet again this year. And whereas the city of Pembroke Pines sends congratulations and celebrates the success of the Bikes for Kids program. Now therefore, I.
Frank Zierdus.
As mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, do hereby proclaim November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, as Rick Case Bikes for Kids Day in the city of Pembroke Pines, and commend these hardworking young people and the Case family for their unselfish dedication to this program and encouraging our residents to support this outstanding project in every way possible.
Thank you.
Fabulous.
I appreciate it. I, I don't, I don't know if I'd be a part of everything here, correct? So it's really a community effort. If we collect all of your and your children's old bikes they no longer need, and we fix them up and we give them to certain kids at the holidays. So we need everybody's support, and it's not just us giving bikes or other businesses giving bikes. Instead of throwing your bike away, bring it to us. We'll fix it up and we'll get it to a child that needs it at the holidays.
That's great.
Well, first, first off, I have to tell you, your mom and dad started this a, a while back, and you all knew that it was such a great project to keep, to keep going, and it's so well-received in the community. I just want to tell you, I know you said everybody kind of bring their bikes and whether they're, whatever shape they're in, because I know you have a great team that fixes them, and new tires, new tubes, new everything, new seats, everything goes on. But I've started with, um, a couple of the, um, the condo communities where they are going to be gathering bikes to give to you.
Oh, great, thank you.
Because that's an untapped area that, and when I was at a meeting, they said, hey, we could give our bikes for this. So we're gonna have, maybe there might be some three-wheelers in there, I'm not sure, but, but you'll use them. Great. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Fabulous. Thank you, family, so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you all.
See you Sunday.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
Thanks.
Good to see you. Mayor Ordus?
Yes, Commissioner Castillo.
Thank you very much. Uh, before we get to the next presentation, today's a special day. Uh, our good friend from Century Village Sophie Bach is ninety-nine years old today.
Yay!
And I had, I had the, I had the pleasure of speaking to her on the phone this morning, and I asked her, did you ever think that you'd get to ninety-nine? I said, when I, and she said, when I was a younger person, I thought that I'd never make it, but now I can tell you, it wasn't that tou, it wasn't that hard. And, uh, she stays very much, uh, active, uh, with her family, with her friends, with her community, uh, activities, and she stays busy. Ninety-nine years old, she's sharp as a tack, and she can't wait to be a hundred. And, uh, happy birthday, Sophie.
Happy birthday, Sophie.
We all wish her happy, happy birthday.
Okay, we have Saturday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, from ten AM to three PM. Join us for the Twenty-Second Annual Storybook Festival, being held at the Southwest Regional Library, sixteen eight three five Sherwood Street. Sunday, September, November nineteenth, from four to six, join us for Save With The Sounds at the Charles F. Dodge City Center Plaza. Always good bands there, so please come by. And Sunday, December second, from four to eight PM, join us for the annual Snow Fest, which is really a great thing to do at the Dodge Center. For details, make sure to visit the city's website and social media accounts. All right, so now we have a great presenter visiting us. Supervisor Joe Scott, come on in, come on up. And let me just say, since he's been elected, no matter what I had to do and ask from the city of Pembroke Pines, he's always there, always there, and he doesn't have to be, but we certainly appreciate it.
Just gonna press that button.
There you go.
All right, now I'm on. Uh, it's all right, I have a handout. Can I come up and give it to you guys?
Sure.
All right. So joining me today is Tony McLeish, who is actually our precinct coordinator for Pembroke Pines and a few other cities, but most importantly Pembroke Pines, since I'm here. Um, so actually I, I came out tonight because I wanted to talk to you guys about, um, the changes that we've made, um, and I know that some folks have expressed some concerns, so I'm here to definitely hear those concerns. But first, if I could, I'd like to give a little brief explanation about how we, uh, worked out the, um, change of precincts that we did last year. So it was really based on the, um, the redistricting that took place. So after the twenty twenty census, there was a redistricting that took place, um, and then when we had to redo the maps anyways, we took that opportunity to right-size some of our precincts and make some of this stuff make a little bit more sense, um, than it appeared to make before. Um, one thing is that there's a, I want to make sure everybody understands the distinction that exists between precincts and polling places. So a precinct is a geographical area that everybody lives in a precinct, and then the polling place being the building that they go to. Uh, one of the little quirks of Florida law that doesn't exist everywhere, but exists here in Florida, is that every precinct can only have one polling place. And so basically, you have to draw out a geographical area, then you have to find a location within that area that will work for everybody who lives there. And if you can't find a location in that area, then you have to go to an adjacent, um, adjacent precinct and find a location there. Um, so that's the challenge that we have. So then, when you do pick a building for everybody to go to, the goal is to find a building that's convenient for the most people in that, uh, particular precinct. Now, the one biggest change that happened from before was really the way that the lines were drawn on the map. As far as when it comes to the number of actual distinct locations, the number of distinct locations that people are going to to vote is almost the same. There were a couple of locations that we discontinued, um, but overall, the number is still the same, and we do still have an opportunity here to add a couple more locations if there is a, a place that makes sense for us to use, um, within that territory. The biggest opportunity here, and I'll mention one, is X twenty-six. So X twenty-six, it's not shown here, um, but the polling place, because it's not shown because the polling place is actually located in the city of Southwest Ranches. Um, and that's why it's not shown, but there is a polling place, um, that is basically within a mile radius. The, the circles that you see on the map are actually a one-mile radius around the polling place, so you can see that almost everybody lives within a one-mile radius of their polling place. And those people who live in X twenty-six, almost all of the people in X twenty-six live within a one-mile radius of their polling place, it's just that it's not there because it's located in Southwest Ranches. Um, X twenty-eight, which is the southwest corner of the city, we've had a tough time finding a location in X twenty-eight, and that's one that if anybody here would like to assist us and help us find a place, we would greatly appreciate that because we are looking for a better location for X twenty-eight. Um, also similarly with X twenty-one and X twenty-two, um, you know, X twenty-two has been voting at the YMCA for a while, so that one is probably good, but we are looking for, if we can find a better location, um, there as well, that will be inside the precinct. But what we found is a couple of these areas, they're so heavily residential that there's really just not a lot of commercial buildings or government buildings or anything that would be suitable for a, um, for a polling place, and the places that are available for some reason are not able to be used. So I will stop there, and I will open up to any questions or concerns that you all have, and I'm happy to, you know, discuss those, um, one-on-one if you guys would like, or discuss them here.
Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I, I, thank you. Thank you for being here, I appreciate it, and all your little circles and, and, and all that. And I understand, um, you know, that you have, you have a very distinct duty that you have to do and, and how it all has to play out. One of the com, complaints that I, that I have gotten, and I wanted to, I'm glad you're here, so that we could really share with you, was, um, specifically, um, in a condo in, uh, in Pembroke Pines, uh, Colony Point, where in fact, um, it's not unlike our other condos here, it's mainly, um, older folks that, that, that live in there, um, and for, for as long as I can remember, they've been able to, um, come, come down and vote right in their clubhouse that was there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so, first off, it's my understanding that that, that that's not, not, no longer happening, and I would just, not, it's not happening there.
Yeah, so.
And that, and that the issue that was brought forward to me by, um, a good number of the residents there is their own mode of transportation, being able to get out of the community to go, to actually be able to, to vote. And, I mean, of course, we've talked to them about, you know, vote by mail and tried to promote that as, as much as possible, but there are still folks that, um, want to go and check off their boxes and put, you know, put their ballot, ballot in, so that's my, that's one of my concerns.
Sure. So, yeah, so Colony Point, that's the one that's going to the elementary school. Okay. Okay, so yeah, so Colony Point, the problem with that one was that it was just a very small, um, location. Now, one question I have here, so there's another option that we have that I'm hoping in this next upcoming year that we use even more. We use it a lot, but we want to use it even more, which is called supervised voting. Now, this is primarily for licensed long-term care facilities, so anybody, um, and, and it could be even as many, as, as few as five people. So as long as it's a license, some of those long-term care facilities are actually pretty small and based out of homes and, um, but they are still licensed facilities and we can still use them.
Right, because that, that's part of your, the requirement where, and I forget what it was titled, so, so.
Yeah, supervised voting.
The sidewalk, the site where you had to actually, someone, if they could, in a wheelchair or whatever, where they would be able to vote right at the sidewalk, was.
Right, so it's almost like a, a special provision that we can go out and set up, you know, additional, you know, onsite voting opportunities for locations where people have mobility issues, where people can't get around, but specifically it's for licensed long-term care facilities. So anywhere that we have those, if it's more than five people assigned to the facility, we can come and use that as a supervised voting site, which would give us.
So your con, your comment that Colony Point was, was small, I mean, I, I'm not sure what that means exactly. It's a.
It was.
Fairly sized community.
Yeah, so, um, so the, basically what we were looking for in terms of making a precinct in general, our precincts are about three thousand people, uh, three thousand voters each, um, so, you know, that community is less than a thousand, so that's why. It was really just too small. Like, if we were to go, um, to every community that was like, had about seven hundred or so people, we'd have like, had about seven hundred or so people, we'd have, you know, a thousand precincts in Broward County.
Well, I, I think there's more than a thousand people that live there, but...
Maybe voters, I mean, we have voters.
Vote, okay. Um, but I guess still, and I, and I under- I, I get what you're saying about how, how you have to divvy up what you have, I, I understand that. But my concern, again, is, um, elderly or folks that can't, have no way to get, you know, to really be able to get out, to, to do, to rely upon people to come in and help them with all of their needs, bringing things to them. So that's always a big concern, so how, how would you address that part of it then?
Yeah, so that would be, again, with the supervised voting, that would be available. Um, if, for, I mean, is there a long-term care facility located in that?
No.
No?
No.
In, inside the complex anywhere?
No.
At all?
No.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, the elementary school, I believe, is maybe about a half a mile away, it's really, really close by, um, that they have to go to, so...
If you have a way to get there.
Huh?
If you have a way to get there.
Yeah, and for the people who can't get there, I think vote by mail might be the best option.
Okay, Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Supervisor Scott.
Yes, yes sir.
First of all, happy, uh, Veterans Day, I know it's a few days late, but, um, thank you for your service, um, welcome to Pembroke Pines.
Appreciate that.
We are the second largest city in Broward County. Um, we outperform the county when it comes to actual voters. When you look at Pembroke Pines', uh, civic engagement, it's exponentially higher than the majority of the cities in Broward County.
Sure.
Including Fort Lauderdale at times.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a year ago, um, I raised the, uh, the concern about seniors being used to going to their clubhouse and, um, being able to vote. The media was reporting that the decision was made that some gated communities kept their clubhouse voting while others were displaced.
Right.
We have four major condos in Pembroke Pines.
Mm-hmm.
Century Village, Hollybrook, they got to keep theirs. Colony Point and Park Place were told to go to the, um, Pembroke Lakes Elementary location, which you can't park. The number of spots, if we were to actually have all those folks come out...
Yep.
At the typical times that people do it, first thing in the morning, late at night, middle of the day, there's no place to park. The capacity isn't there. Um, the location has served Pembroke Lakes' single-family homes extremely well, but we have, was, uh, our restaurant, a Club Nineteen restaurant, we have Pembroke Lakes is split. The, I appreciate when you came into office trying to, um, streamline things. I know that we've had a history within Broward County of, um, let's just say dysfunction at the SOE's office at times. Um, certainly, I am, I am hopeful that we're able to restore all the original polling places in the city Pembroke Pines, restore each and every one of them. When I asked the city manager earlier today in anticipation of, uh, you coming here, I said, "Did we get charged any less for having only one location?" "No, we could charge the same." So, it's not a budgetary thing for us. As a matter of fact, um, I don't want to speak for all my colleagues, but if we were asked the question, "Are we willing to spend more in order to make it easier to vote?", the question's gonna, eh, we're gonna say yes every single time. You don't have to worry about budget in, in Pembroke Pines, when it comes to civic engagement, giving the people the right and ease to vote. I believe that the, the matrix that was put in here may be skewed a little bit because of, uh, the twenty twenty, um, pandemic. Uh, generally, people go to the polls here in Pembroke Pines. They like to fill in the bubble, they don't typically like to put it in the mailbox, unlike maybe some other communities within Broward County. Um, there are other clubhouses, other HOAs, citywide, that lost their polling place, and now they have to go outside their community. You know what we discovered? Voting went down. They didn't participate in a major November election. They didn't come out and vote. Going the extra half a mile made a difference, not only just for seniors, but those who are actually mobile, the change. I remember the last time this polling thing changed, I was a poll watcher. Um, I signed up for a four-hour shift, uh, in two thousand. And it was in, um, Commissioner Cices' district, it was actually, um, it was actually Pembroke Falls. And those folks were told to go to Walter C Young, and the folks at Walter C Young thought they were going to Pembroke Falls, because that's what they've only, they've always known that. Supervisor, for whatever reason, didn't get cards out in time, or there was a, some had the old card, some had the new card, it was a problem. So I had voter rights attorneys on scene. I still, I still don't know, to this day, if my vote counted in two thousand, but I do know how many people were disenfranchised in the city on that night. It was, um, uh, it, it was, it was dreadful. So, I had that same gut punch in November of twenty twenty-two, when this came out, because I saw the same thing, Supervisor. And I'm asking you to reconsider, to restore the polling locations that we ha- have had historically since two thousand and four. You're going to see more voter engagement. If it costs a little more, so be it, that's the price of freedom, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, so just to be clear, though, the Park Place location, um, is the one they're actually voting at a golf club, that is just off the property, there's actually a sidewalk that goes by a golf course.
Yes.
That, from the gate to the golf club, I measured the distance from the gate to the golf club, and it's like less than half a mile, but it's like a nice sidewalk that people can walk down to get to the golf club. So it's like, they don't even have to go on any major streets, they don't really have to go anywhere, they walk out of their building, they walk down the sidewalk to this golf club, and that's where they vote. I feel like that one is really convenient for those folks.
Supervisor, I've represented this community for twelve years. They're not walking down the sidewalk, they're staying home. I'm asking you to restore the polling locations, please.
It just seems, it seems like very, very wasteful to have two polling places so close together. And I'll tell you, there's some other locations as well that were so close together, and I'll tell you what actually happens, sometimes when you have polling places that are very, very close together, that people actually get confused and they go to the wrong one. And especially if you show up late in the evening and it's almost seven o'clock, if you're standing in line at the wrong polling place, and then you find out you have to go to a different polling place, you won't get to vote, because you have to be in line at your polling place before seven o'clock. So sometimes, less can actually be more, when you're having polling places that are so close together that you're confusing the voters about which one they're supposed to go to. Putting two polling places that close together, to me, it's just a total, it's a total waste, it might even be detrimental in the long run to, to, um, participation. And, you know, I just don't see that people that want to go out and vote are going to not vote, because it's this clubhouse down the street as opposed to the clubhouse that's, you know, right, right in their building.
Sir, with all due respect, Dr. Snipes didn't have this issue. Supervisor Antonacci didn't have this issue. You're the first supervisor we've had with a, with a, with a decline in voter participation.
Well...
I'm asking you, sir, I'm asking you.
Yeah, but...
Please reconsider to reestablish our polling locations in the city Pembroke.
But just to be clear, the decline, the voting pattern that we saw in Broward County in twenty twenty-two matched statewide, okay? So if you look at it, especially if you look at it by a partisan's land, there was a huge drop-off in participation, especially by Democrats, which Broward County is heavily Democratic, and anywhere where you had a lot of Democrats, you saw very low participation in twenty twenty-two. So it's not something that only happened at Park Place and Colony Point, it's not something that only happened in Broward County, it happened throughout the state of Florida. And the results were clear, it didn't happen throughout the country, but it happened in Florida. And it was not by any limit or any, any way localized to our area. And there's no statistics that you can look at that will show you that it was localized to our area, it was throughout the state.
Okay, Commissioner Chris Dill?
Thank you very much. I appreciate your presentation, I thank you for being here with us today. It, it would be a nice thing if we could figure out a way to, um, keep the polling places open at senior locations. Um, I'm thankful that you will look at that, and if it's not possible, give us the time so that we can do certain things. I am not against Mr. Dodge on Election Day, uh, putting together a special, sort of a bus operation that would take seniors to their location. Uh, I'm originally from New York, that was not unusual for the city to do that for its, uh, um, special needs residents there, they would bus them to the, uh, the polls, because they needed that help. And, uh, I'm not against doing that, it's a little bit different, um, uh, duty for the city, but if that's what we have to do, that's what we have to do. Um, encouraging voting by mail is, is an absolute necessity. Um, why we don't just vote by mail, uh, like Washington and, and Oregon is beyond me, but eh, eh, the more people are, that are voting by mail, the better off I think the system is going to be in terms of efficiency. So I, 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 I am also all for that. Uh, you mentioned a precinct or, uh, uh, um, out west that you need a site for, is, was that twenty-seven or twenty-eight that you said?
Yes, uh, yes, twenty-eight.
So twenty-eight, from your circle, looks to me like it's in the, um, the Rose Price Park, uh, location. Now, but, but then you said something else, you said, uh, 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 priest, uh, voting, um, precincts can't share a voting location?
So, more than one precinct can be in the same location, but there can only be one location for every precinct. So a precinct can't have more, eh, we can't have people going to two different locations for a single precinct, but we can have more than one precinct.
So have you studied the possibility of Rose Price Park being the location for twenty-nine and twenty-eight?
That might be the solution now, that's probably currently, yeah, that is the current solution.
I think that's, I think that's how it works now, because you used to have, you used to have the church, the Fountains Church, which was a voting location out west? Do you remember the Fountains Church?
Not sure.
Okay. That was past, uh, Lomax's Church?
Yeah.
And that was a voting location for a very, very long time. So I don't know if, if, if that location is no longer available, um, but, uh, the Rose Price location is, is available. Also Chapel Trail Elementary is a voting location.
Yep, so I think that's still case, that we have two precincts voting at the, at that location that you just mentioned, and really, we were open to adding another location there, that would be closer for those residents in X twenty-eight, because they're, they're traveling more than a mile to get to their polling place.
I'm quite impressed to think of a governmental facility out there that is, that is suitable, other than a school, um, than the Rose Price, uh, Community Center there, and, uh, uh, I know that it's, I know that it's, it's big enough to handle, um...
It, it, it always has in their voting, it's a big one.
Right, so I, so I, I would encourage you to look at that, but, but if that, if that doesn't work, I'm willing to work with you and with the city manager to find this western location that you're looking for.
Yeah, so just to be clear, that is, what, what's it called again?
Rose Price.
Rose Price, Rose G. Price Park is the place that X twenty-eight is currently voting. The problem is that it's more than a mile for those people, so because they have to travel so far, I would prefer for us to open up a new location that would be closer so that those people don't have to travel so far.
Mr. Dodge, can we ask, uh, staff to take a look, and if we have any suggestions, uh, for voting locations? I, I can't think of one other than a school. You can't do it at the fire station, so I, I... Yeah, no, no, it would be too disruptive, so, um, we have to find some other solution. Uh, I don't know if the substation would lend itself to this.
But we'll look at X, uh, twenty-eight for a location in the south of Pines Boulevard for that area.
Well, my se- my sense is that it, it's been, it's been working well all these years at, uh, at Rose Price Park, so...
Good.
Yeah.
I, I agree, I just see that as an opportunity, because...
Okay.
...of the distance that those folks have to travel, uh, X twenty-one and X twenty-two as well. So X twenty-one, those folks used to vote in Century Village...
Yeah.
But they, you know, because they have to, we were, one thing we were trying to avoid was that we didn't want anybody to have to pass through a gate to go vote, um, so that's why X twenty-one was split off from Century Village, um, because those folks would have to go through a gate.
Yeah, this has been a problem in the past, where we have, um, people just on the other side of Flamingo, and somehow they were included, eh, eh, in, in the Century Village voting location, but they had no right to enter. And that's, that's a complicated thing, I remember talking to Fred Bellis about it years ago. So, uh, there, you know, the, that, that is, that is a concern, if you're gonna have it at that location. Of course, at, at Century Village, you have thousands of people going to the voting location, so certainly, certainly that, that one has to be preserved.
So that's another one, and the people who live in X twenty-two in the southern, at least the southern part of X, well, actually, most of X twenty-two, those people also travel over a mile to go to the YMCA, um, so if we found something closer, but we've looked and it's really just on residential...
But I understand the sensitivity when it comes to seniors, and I know you do as well.
Yeah, sure.
That, you know, there, eh, eh, it, it would be very, very difficult, uh, for someone who wanted to vote but refused to vote by mail, uh, to walk in excess of a, of, of a, because then, then it's another quarter mile to their building from the gate. So it, that's quite the walk.
Rose Price Park is very busy as well.
The what?
Rose Price Park is very busy in voting, because I like to go around, say hello to everybody. Parking is sometimes difficult during the...
It works, it works well, it works well.
Yeah, I was talking about, I was talking about seniors, so, so it, it would be a little bit difficult for seniors, uh, and so, any accommodation that you can make, I don't know if, if the, the buses that you have, the supervised election buses, if they can be used as, as mobile, uh, voting locations, I don't know if that's a solution. Uh, but, uh, I know that you'll look at it...
Yeah, absolutely.
And if, uh, if, uh, we look forward to your final answer on that, hopefully you can accommodate the request the commission's making, and if it's not possible, because it's not workable, please give us enough time so that we can, uh, we can figure out a way to make sure that they all get to vote. I want to thank you for your service to the, to the county and, uh, for being a gentleman, thank you.
Mayor, can I say...
Wait, now, hold on.
Thank you, yes.
I want to make sure we emphasize the fact that you have to call and get a vote by mail slip, it's not automatic anymore. I mean, I, I get it automatically, I always loved it, but now we have to tell everybody, you have to vote, you have to call or send in something to get one mailed. That's correct, correct?
Yes, that's correct, so everybody, everybody who, um, has not already requested this year, um, in the year twenty twenty-three, if you haven't made a new request, the requests are good for one election cycle, um, so one election cycle starting in January of an odd number year until December of an even number year.
We gotta hope they remember.
So if you make that request, it'll be good until December of next year, and then you'll have to make another request after that.
We have to, I hope they remember. Vice Mayor, last...
Yeah, I, yeah, last, last comment, um...
Yes, ma'am.
On the, on the vote by mail, um, while it is, has now caused everybody to take some action, you know, to, to now re-register, re-re- request, um, I think it was a good thing to help make sure that you've kind of cleaned out all, and you have current information on everybody, which is, which is really important, so I, that was kind of a double-edged good move on that one, you know, but, no, good, but good. Um, and so I, I guess what I would just like to say to you, and, and understanding the, the logistics of what you all do, which to me would be a nightmare, honestly, it would be a nightmare to do, but you do it, you do it well, you have, you know, you do it well, and we, we all appreciate that. I guess what you've heard, um, from, from my colleagues up here is that, um, while we understand a- all of that, we, we are just, you know, respectfully asking you to take into consideration the concern that has been expressed to us from a- a- our seniors and, and those folks that, that have had changes, and, and we're not saying change isn't good and all that, but for those that it has caused, um, an issue for, that has perhaps, uh, at, in some cases even, you know, made it more difficult or almost impossible for them to, to, to vote, that you would just, um, again, please consider what you can do to help us, since we, we do have a good number of, of, uh, seniors that live in our community that like to be involved in, but it has to, it has to be easy for them, you know, physically easy for them. But it has to be easy for them, you know, physically easy for them. I'm just asking.
Mayor, I have one last point. Thank you. Under your tenure, you've done wonderful things with the website. I use it all the time, and I'm really, really, I want to commend you and your staff for the work that you've done with the website. With respect to resigning up for vote by mail, is it possible for you to do some sort of a dashboard there on how we're doing with requests that have come in as against, you know, what the, I don't know, I don't want to call it a goal. I don't know that you have a goal for... But as against the number of people that used to have it or in some other way that can be accessed sort of on a precinct-by-precinct basis? Because, as you know, candidates have the ability to encourage people to vote by mail. And I'm very, very concerned, well beyond the March election, that one doesn't really... Well beyond that, it's very important that folks resign up. And I know that you've done some mailings about this, and I'm appreciative of all that. But I'm wondering if you could program in some sort of a dashboard so that we have a sense of how that's coming along. And apart from that, do you have any anecdotal sense or any numerical sense of how that's coming along?
Yes.
How are people performing on their re-request, as it were, for vote by mail?
Yep, so we actually have a list of people that requested a vote by mail ballot either for the 2020 or the 2022 cycle. And there's a total of 550,000 voters for the county. And out of those 550,000 people, we've gotten 124,500 to sign up so far.
So we got a long way to go.
We still have a long, very long way to go. But, you know, we've actually been adding about a thousand a day for the last maybe six weeks or so. So it's been pushing along at a pretty good pace. And if we keep up that pace, I'm pretty confident we'll get close. I don't think we'll reach the same number. Well, I don't think we'll reach the same number because I think a lot of people did vote by mail because of COVID-19, and they're going to go back. But another thing we're doing is we're adding more early voting locations as well. So we're having more early voting locations. We're also adding more drop box opportunities across the county as well, as well as we have two office locations here in the city of Pembroke Pines. And those two office locations will have drop boxes even outside of the hours and dates of early voting.
Supervisor, how many other drop boxes? So any sort of dashboard or toolbox that you can put onto your website?
Good idea.
That would assist communities to encourage compliance with this new rule? This would be very, very helpful.
Right, I understand. Yeah, even, you know, I think we should also take a look at even other opportunities to possibly add more, maybe add an additional early voting site here in the city of Pembroke Pines as well.
Okay, great idea.
If that's something the city would be interested in. Some cities are interested, some cities aren't, but...
They are.
We're always interested in what people vote.
Commissioner Castillo, Commissioner Schwartz. Two points. First one would be, it would make the most sense to have, if you're going to expand an early voting site, to have it right here at City Hall. Everyone knows where City Hall is at. You have underperforming library on the east side, and then you have to go to the regional library out west, which leaves basically all Pines Boulevard in our city. It's challenging to go to. So a lot of our voters actually just go to the Miramar Library or they go to Cooper City just to go and split that.
Okay.
Okay, so drop box security.
Thank you.
Drop box security is something that we certainly cannot be ground zero of national media attention about drop boxes.
For sure.
Okay, I appreciated the drop boxes at the early voting locations where they were actually there during normal business hours, and they were secured at night. So when I hear that you're looking at having an overnight drop box, I would strongly encourage you just to be at your office, right? And that would be the extent of it because we can't have the opportunities as we get closer to November to be a challenge.
Right, so we really would like to have, you know, one thing that we're aware of is some people have different working hours, and we want to make sure especially for people that work odd shifts that they have the ability to drop off before their shift, after their shift. So we really went through the effort to open up these new offices, including these two offices in the city of Pembroke Pines. I know Mayor Ordus came to the opening of one of our offices here. And, you know, those offices are really going to give us an opportunity to expand those hours and give people a place to drop off, and that's really important, I think, to a lot of working voters.
And last quick shout out, your ability to deliver results is amazing, outstanding as far as the timing of it. I thank you for that. And if we can only get the panhandle to join us on the east coast, we'll even have a quick result in November.
Mr. Scott, supervisor Scott, thank you so much.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
This city's ready to help.
All right, thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you both for being happy.
All right, announcement of items to be pulled from the agenda, city clerk.
No items, ma'am.
Items at the request of the public.
No items.
Commissioner's order report?
None, ma'am.
Appeals of the Board of Justicement Decisions?
No appeals.
Announcing the board and committee appointments?
No announcements.
We have consent agenda, item 1216. What is your pleasure?
Move.
Moved by Commissioner Seifel, second by, who was the second? Commissioner Castillo, discussion? Anybody from the audience want to comment? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We're on second reading ordinances, item 17, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. Number 17 relates to a motion to pass proposed ordinance number 2023-08 on second and final reading. It's a public hearing this evening, as you know, mayor. An ordinance of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter 32 of the city's code of ordinances entitled Departments, Boards, and Commissions by specifically amending section 32.197 of the city code entitled Creation, amending the appointment process and composition of the city's youth advisory board, providing for separability, providing for conflicts, providing for codification, and finally, providing for an effective date. A mayor is on the floor for consideration with a public hearing.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Seifel, Vice Mayor Seifel, so second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Castillo, discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let me first, anybody on a public one talk about the public hearing? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. The reason for the change in here was that there was a request, and we discussed this at first reading, that there was a request for a Pines resident, a student, a Pines resident who does not attend any of the five schools that are part of this board, that this was a homeschooled student. And so that was something that, quite honestly, we didn't really even consider at the time when it was, when we put this great program into place. And so it did seem like that we do have a number of students that are homeschooled and that they should have every opportunity because that is their choice to be homeschooled. They should have every opportunity that other students have to be a participant of this city board. And so the language change in here, the process is still the same. Nothing on that is changing. It just now makes a provision for a homeschooled student to fill out an application. Just like the others, they're not guaranteed a position on there. It is reviewed by city manager, and he makes the final decision on that. And so that's the language that would be changed. And as well as the board was originally to be 15 members, five schools, three from each school, we added two openings, two possible openings to make the board total at 17. That would take into consideration if we got applications from two additional homeschoolers. So that's really the change in here was to just make provision for homeschooled students.
Thank you. Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo, have something?
Thank you very much. I'm supportive of the change so that homeschooled students and students that attend private schools can potentially, you know, apply. We had discussed, Mr. Dodge and city manager, we had, city attorney, we had discussed that in the application, there would be parental consent and information for them regarding their youth participation in... Has there been any change to the application as a result of this amendment? Is it going to be the same application?
Mr. Mayor, may I respond quickly?
City attorney?
Not since the first reading, no, there's not.
Okay, so it's the exact same application that has been discussed?
Promoted and used, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, it's a great item.
It is, and they've had three.
And we have, I know when I go out to the National League of Cities and the US Conference of Mayors, a lot of cities have their youth vice board.
Right, right. And they've had three meetings and done very well with their meetings.
Great. Call roll, please, city clerk.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
For the record, mayor and commission, the permanent number is 2013.
Okay, item 18, please.
Thank you, mayor and commission. Number 18 is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2023-R-40. That's the CDBG substantial amendment, public hearing from the beginning of the commission meeting. Proposed resolution number 2023-R-40 is in fact a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving a substantial amendment to the city's action plan for community development block grant. That's the CDBG program for the year 2021, directing the city manager to submit the substantial amendment to the city's action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development and authorizing the city manager to execute all required documents, providing for conflicts, separability, and providing for an effective date. 18 on the floor, thank you.
Moved by Commissioner Castillo, second by the vice mayor. Let me just say that I was on the phone the other day with several cities from the US Conference of Mayors talking about the community development block grants. We have gotten some people have really used these, and it's a great program. I want to thank Mike Stam for always giving the details of it. So we need to keep pushing it, community development block grant. Thank you, Mr. Stam. All right, call roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And for the record, mayor and commission, the permanent number for number raising is 3843.
Thank you. 19, sir.
Thank you, mayor and commission. Number 19 is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2023-R-41, which is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, supporting FloridaRightToCleanWater.org's efforts to create a constitutional right to clean and healthy waters, directing the city clerk to, for the record, provide copies of this resolution to the governor, Ron DeSantis, the Broward County Legislature delegation, the Broward County Board of County Commissioners, the Broward League of Cities, and all other appropriate governmental entities, authorizing the appropriate city officials to take any action necessary to further the intent of this resolution, subject nonetheless to the terms, conditions, and limitations contained in section 106.113 Florida statutes and entitled expenditures by local governments, providing for conflicts, separability, and providing for an effective date.
So moved by Commissioner Schwartz, second by Commissioner Castillo. Let me just say that Mary Stevens did a great job.
Yes, she did.
I'm trying to help her with the Broward League, as you mentioned, and see it in here, the Florida League. Any place we could help her get people to come out or help look at that. It's great, great idea.
I was pleased to bring it forward, mayor, and I am pleased to support it now because when we work to keep our water clean, we keep our land clean, we keep our air clean, and we serve our own health interests. So this is a very good item. I want to thank Mary, who could not make it here tonight, for bringing it to our attention. And I hope that folks take an interest in it. So thank you.
About 10 years ago, the US Conference of Mayor had a contest having every city bring their water.
Yeah.
And they had a panel that was picked, and guess where Pembroke Pines came? And we were duped because we didn't get number one.
You're right.
We took number two in the nation.
That's correct.
For our good water. So thank you to all of our mechanical people in our water department.
Very important.
All right, call roll, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes, all right.
Motion passed.
And for the record, mayor and commission, the permanent number is number 3944.
Item 21, sir.
Thank you very much. Action number 20, mayor, if you will.
Item 20?
Uh, 20, 20, sorry, I skipped.
Thank you. 20 was a good one. We'll do that one. Motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2023-R-42, which is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving the public transportation agency's safety plan, that's the PTASP, authorizing the city manager to annually adopt and approve the PTASP administratively via submission of an annual safety certification and adoption, authorizing the Pembroke Pines Community Services Department director to file the PTASP with Broward County Transportation Department, that's the BCT, on an annual basis, authorizing the appropriate city officials to take any little action necessary to further the intent of this resolution, subject nonetheless to the terms, conditions, and limitations contained in section 106.113 Florida statutes and entitled expenditures by local governments, and providing for conflicts, separability, and providing for an effective date. Number 20, final four.
Thank you. Moved by the vice mayor, second. I'll second the motion. Okay, discussion? Hearing non-call roll, please.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. On item 21, city attorney.
Thank you. For the permanent record, mayor, it's number 3845 for number 20. There's a brief typo in the title. There's a repetition from the previous resolution. Any reference to 106.113 will be struck from the final draft. It is irrelevant to the approval, which has been approved by the mayor and commission publicly, with the public having a right to be heard. 21, mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. This is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2023-R-43. It's a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, accepting a special warning deed from the Trinity Lutheran Church of Pembroke Pines, Florida, Inc. and BP Pines LLC for a 10-foot strip of land adjacent to Southwest 72nd Avenue, as more particularly described in composite exhibit A, authorizing and directing the mayor and the appropriate city officials to accept the deed and to take any little action that may be necessary to effectuate the conveyance of land to the city, providing for conflicts, separability, and providing for effective date.
Moved by Commissioner Schwartz, second by the vice mayor. Thank you, Mr. Dickerson. We appreciate it. Discussion?
Quickly, mayor.
Go ahead, quickly, yes.
Yeah, quickly. Mr. Dickerson, come on down. The residents of Pembroke Pines have one question for you, sir. When will this thing get open?
Good evening, Dwayne Dickerson, for the record, on behalf of the property owner. We hope to, with this approval tonight, we'll move forward with our plat, a final submitted to the county, and we hope to start construction early next year and get rolling. So as long as the county can finalize our plat soon, we're ready to roll.
So the ribbon cutting is fine?
All right, thank you. Don't quote, don't quote me. But I think hopefully towards the latter part of next year, we'd like to be... We'd like to be able to...
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Call roll, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
For the record, mayor and commission, the permanent number for number 21 is 3846.
Okay, regular agenda, Mr....
3846.
Mr. Gore?
I'm sorry?
Regular agenda?
Yes.
Motion to accept the recommendations within the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, AHAC report 2023, transmit the report to the Florida Housing Corporation.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Schwartz, second by the vice mayor. Discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, Commissioner Schwartz.
I want to thank all the citizens who participated in this, again, a much-needed conversation. Shout out to Mike Stam, Joe Yachuk, and staff for putting on amazing information, useful information. Affordable housing is certainly something that is needed, and I'm looking forward to having, seeing what this report's going to look like next year based on the success that we're going to have with projects that are coming forward.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Hearing non-call roll, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. City manager?
No items, mayor. City attorney? Yes, mayor, just two quick items, if I may. The first of which is, over the past 48 hours, I shared with you a confidential and privileged legal document regarding some pending class action matters the city is handling in the United States District Court in Charleston, South Carolina. You've read the emails from our office as well as those from special counsel. Tonight, in the context of that matter, for the purposes of moving forward, it is the city attorney's recommendation along with special counsel to not opt out and to essentially pursue...